Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present for roll call. Commissioner Narit Katz.
Present.
Commissioner Lehrer. President Katz.
Here.
Vice President McGraw.
Present.
Commissioner Pender.
Present.
For board members, a quorum is present. Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome everyone to this meeting of the Board of Commissioners, LADWP. Welcome everyone on what will be a busy day. But to start, a couple just agenda items. First, I'm going to pull item L3 off the agenda and defer that. And I also want to pull L2, L10, and L11, L11, all to be pulled till a later date. At all. And then what I would also like to do and take out of order is L13. L13 has a resolution recognizing and thanking and honoring our general manager and the gentleman who only recently received a 40-year pin, which is phenomenal. Marty, a very distinguished and long-tenured career, has a lot to do with the fact that LADWP is who it is today and was due to his leadership and took place under his watch. We have a long resolution. Thank you. We have a long resolution commemorating that that we will go into later. But in the meantime, I want to ask if board members want to make any comments before we move through this.
Yeah, I can save my comments for later when we do the item, but thank you so much for the opportunity.
We're going to do the item now.
Oh, okay. All right, great. Yeah, I mean, I shared some comments in our last meeting when we did the 40-year pin, but I just want to repeat them and say that, you know, this is an incredible amount of experience as well as a colleague walking out the door and definitely a loss for DWP, but a well-earned transition for you. We really appreciate the legacy that you've created, especially on the water side, obviously, but also steering the department through some really, really rocky waters, coming out of a difficult period and through COVID. And that steady hand was so needed at that time and really appreciated. So I think, I can't speak for all of the board, but for me, it's sort of unreal. I can't believe this is really your last, you know, board day. And you will definitely be missed, but we're certain that you will continue to have an impact throughout the region. Yesterday, I was able to be at the Verde Exchange Conference and the water charrette there and get to hear some remarks from you reflecting on this long career in water and what's needed to move our region forward. And there were many decision-makers in that room. And I know that your voice and your experience and expertise will continue to guide us as we figure out a sustainable, resilient water future for Los Angeles. So, thank you, Marty, and I'll pass it to other board members.
Very much.
Let's go down the line. Marty, I am so grateful to you, and I just, I hope you find just as much warmth and excitement and joy in this next chapter of your life as you have the last 40 years here, and I appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm new to this party, so to speak, so I'm really meeting Marty as he's going out and I was coming in. But while DWP, of course, is a reason for our existence, I always like to say, know somebody on a different level. So one of the first things we find we had in common were one, parents who had association with Texas. And I know Marty has family that lives there. And then just this weekend, I was at TCU graduation of my grandchild. So what I like to say in this sense, you can meet someone very quickly and deeply, if you will allow yourself. You can care about someone in a conversation, if you will allow yourself. And I appreciate you just chatting with me and just being a human being. And I know of your great work here at the department. Anyone who could be at DWP for 40 years just has water running through their veins, for sure. But we all appreciate what you have done, and I appreciate the humanity that you have left on the stamp of people you've worked with and certainly with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all much. I want to also just second to everything that Wilma said. And Marty and I developed a relationship over the years, mostly on airports, if I remember correctly.
Pretty much.
Either going to Sacramento, coming back from Sacramento, or somewhere in between, or a couple of water conferences over at Silverado in there as well. But a lot of the pieces that, you know, never show up on the resume, but it's where business gets done and a lot of people develop relationships. And I was always appreciative of your accessibility and your willingness to talk to somebody who, you know, at that point was just sort of, you know, really green and really trying to figure out where I was and what I was doing. So I appreciate that. That doesn't mean you have to take responsibility for how I turned out. But it helped me, and I am very appreciative and grateful for that and for your patience. So it's not an easy job, being GM for a place of this size and this diverse and just impactful on a community. And the city would be in a lot worse shape had you not been there. So again, I thank you for all of the people in Los Angeles and especially for all the people who just know that their lights are going to come on in the morning and there's water when the tap, you turn on the tap. You know, it's a miracle in some ways and a mystery in others how all that happens. I remember when I first got elected to the legislature, some water advocates coming by and saying, "You got to really focus on completing the state water project." And I looked at them and said, "Completing a state water project?" I turn on my tap at home, water comes out. So it must be complete, or the water wouldn't be coming out, right? That's where I started in this business. So it was an interesting perspective, but a lot to learn. And as we know from Mr. Mulholland and Mayor Eaton, sometimes the simplest way to do things is the best is they created the LA Aqueduct by line of sight and taking that trip from Mono Lake and a buckboard with a couple of jugs in the back over several days, and yet being almost perfect. And their assessment and the pipeline that got built from that, and most people don't realize that pipe, that water goes all the way from Mono Lake to the south side of the San Fernando Valley without being pumped once, which is pretty phenomenal considering, again, the buckboard, the jugs, and the line of sight. They did an amazing job and I think very emblematic of the department's can-do attitude. So we are grateful, we are appreciative, we worship you, nothing but the best, and frankly, wish you would smile a little less right now as you are. I'm almost out of here. If you just shut up, we can go ahead and... Let me turn it over to any of the AGMs or anybody else who's here who wants to add on or say anything for, you know, to thank Marty for his service. The floor would be open if there are people in the audience or people that just want to witness to make sure you're going. I know that mixed bag. I know you do. Yes, sir.
Marty, on behalf of the power system and all employees, we just want to say thank you so much for all the support over the last five years. It's phenomenal, especially your leadership during the pandemic years. Those were not easy days, and we needed a general manager that was steering the department in the right direction, and you were there for us. And recently, over the last three years, your huge support in bringing hydrogen as really as an alternative fuel for the future of power system. This is a legacy that you're leaving with Power System, and we would like to make sure that we implement it. And you'll always be welcome to Power System. We really appreciate everything you've done and your support over the years. For that reason, we have built yet another middle lamp specifically for you. And on behalf of the power system, I would like to present it to you.
Just, we just asked that you can serve your use of electricity.
Maybe we can't see you, but right.
Need a tiny little silicon.
So if I may, we have a short presentation from the water system as well. But I'd ask the water system directors if you want to join me up at the podium. So Marty, it's a real honor for us to... Is this live? Can you hear? Is it working? Okay. It's a real honor for all of us to come up here and present you with a plaque. The plaque basically celebrates four decades of tremendous service to the water system. But I think why we're up here is because I think each of us have felt you have personally challenged us over the years to become experts at what we do, to exercise great judgment, critical thinking, and we've all learned that and been inspired and challenged by you over the years. And on top of that, just looking forward to those challenges each decade. I think you were making some comments that in one decade, we think we've solved the master problem only to come to the next decade, and there's something else huge for us to solve. So I think all of us relish having those decades of opportunities to apply ourselves and get the others behind us to work. And last but not least, you know, this concept of the chief engineer, I think you've really been imparted on us, the need that we're all interdisciplinary engineers. We're trying to solve large community and regional problems, and that those work most effectively as partners, right? That we can reach out to folks in the power side, the joint system, other city agencies. And I think that's the impression you've left upon us, that we all need to work together so that those easiest and best solutions do in many often times come through the result of collaboration. So thank you very much on behalf of all the water system directors. Thank you.
Where's our photographer when we need it?
He's here.
He's behind him.
Got a good, long lens. He'll capture.
And since most of the problems aren't easy, the collaboration is even more important. Anyone else want to say something? I feel they have to say something.
I just wanted to briefly say, Marty, that this is indeed the end of an era. 40 years of a career is a phenomenal achievement. And what struck me most about you from when we first started getting to know each other was that you were always an engineer first, and you became our chief engineer. But you also had the ability to communicate, and you made our jobs easier, and you made it a priority to inform anybody who would listen at a community meeting that you met on the street, that you talked to in an airport, about the intricacies of what we do and how that miracle is possible every day. And it makes people whose job it is to communicate so much easier. The other thing I wanted to say is that there was never a question about people trusting you and your integrity and putting this department's interests first. And again, for those of us whose job it is to ensure that we put the reputation of the department first and hold it in highest regard, it makes our jobs so much easier. So thank you for that. And there's never been a doubt that you're always interested in what can be better for our employees, for our safety, for our customers. And we appreciate it, and you will be missed. So thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
And Marty, you've been a true inspirational leader for my time in the water system for 20 years. When I happened to be in one of your presentations in water distribution, and you essentially were talking about the re-architecting of the water system in compliance with the surface water treatment rule. And, you know, getting to see your leadership over the years and how much detail and command of the system that you possess was just truly an inspiration. But then also having an opportunity to work with you here in the leadership team and as a result of your intentionality around diversity, equity, and inclusion, the fact that you took the lead in establishing this office and allowing for all the work that we do on behalf of not only our employees, but on behalf of the City of Los Angeles has been a remarkable achievement. And I really appreciate everything that you've done and wish you the best in your retirement years, Marty.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rick.
President Katz.
And before you, just say, and for those who are wondering about the lineman's rodeo on Saturday, there's a special time slot for Marty to be climbing one of those poles. It's been a long time.
Are you going to do it in your Captain Hydro cape?
That'll be worth a picture or two. But it's just a special slot for you to do that, Marty. There was a unanimous request for that. We granted. Yes, and go, please.
Thank you. Marty, I just want to say thank you. And for some people, they don't know, about once a year, once every year, the year we meet with the rating agencies. And we went through a difficult time in 2019. And when Marty came to the helm and met with the rating agencies, he really provided that confidence, that leadership, that the department was on top of things. There wasn't a question that people could ask that Marty didn't have an answer for. So just want to say thank you for the leadership supporting financial services. You're going to be missed, but I know you're going to do great things, even if you're not here. Congratulations.
Appreciate that.
Just another, I know a lot of comments were made about Marty and what he has contributed to the... I've known you for almost 40 years. So I got to know his family, his grandkid, and his daughter, his wife, and his entire family. So I just want to wish Marty a great retirement, enjoying his family, more time with them, and staying healthy and happy and getting the fruits of 40 years of serving the city and the department.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? With that, just to add my thanks and deep appreciation of everyone in the city. I mean, you know, this is, I guess, from a city standpoint, DMB, DWP is the DMV equipment of a state agency. In the sense that it's the one part of government that everyone has contact with across the board, and without regard to who they are, where they live, what their economics are. And I think you know, and you had a lot to do with this, but I think we all also know and want to acknowledge, you know, the City of LA has, the men and women at DWP, they hold it high esteem and high regard because we know who's out there taking care of the city day in and day out, good weather, bad weather, anything in between. And we've seen a lot of that in-between stuff the last couple of years in particular. But the men and women who work here do just an amazing job, and a large part of that was due to your leadership, and want to thank you for that and for setting a standard that the workers continue to exceed every single day. And so that's a great legacy and critical for this department and for the city to go forward. Add my thanks and appreciation, and my guess is I'll still see you in airports. Maybe going places more fun this time, but, you know, some of those other trips. But thank you on behalf of everyone. Thank you very much. All right. All right. We're going to move ahead on the agenda.
Are you going to do this?
I guess we should probably... Do you want to just start? Here, Marty. No, I... We have one of the really fancy resolutions. This one's like multiple pages long, and I'm not going to read the whole thing because it's too long, and once we got done with this, couldn't be able to get your head through the door. So about the last 40 years for Marty, and let me present this to you with our thanks. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can make a motion. I think we have to vote on that, too. I'll make a motion to approve it. He has an item, so that makes it official.
I'll do a motion to approve item 13 and make the resolution honoring Marty official.
Without objection, all members present being prepared as I votes on the resolution. I guess that means we're also certifying that everything it says being true. So motion passes. Thank you, Narit.
Yeah, thank you, Marty.
Marty, please.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you so much for this honor. And it really is an honor. I want to thank the board and thank everyone who's here today. And certainly thank you to all the senior team and for your wonderful comments. I guess when you stay too long, you get, actually, a two-page...
A multi-page.
I've never seen a two-page resolution. It's a good thing the print's not any smaller. I would never be able to read it, but I guess that means it's time to go. No room for another line. So I just, you know, wanted to say how, what an honor it's been to lead the agency for the last almost five years. I was fortunate that Mayor Garcia, he was able to put me in this post. I'm glad Mayor Bass let me stay on until the time that I was planning to retire. And I know we have a lot, you know, a few new board members, but in the short time, I feel very close to all of you. And so are you the old timer now all of a sudden?
I guess, yeah. Well, no, me, yeah.
That's right. I was with her all day yesterday. Oh, yeah. You know, 40 years goes by fast, and I mean, this has been the greatest career of all because it's been with the best of people, and I really felt that way the whole time. I think I first walked in the door when I was 19 years old, starting my first summer job here. And so it's been quite a while. And when I took this job in 2019, everybody said, "Stay two years, it's good. Three years, you're going to hate it." And then, of course, COVID hit, and it kind of changed all the timeframe. And the first thing I thought was, I hope being GM is not all about just getting through COVID. And, you know, it really wasn't. I mean, we made it through that as a department, but we got so much done. And we, I mean, everything we wanted to do, all of our goals, all our accelerated infrastructure replacement, all that stuff, all the new goals for power and water, all continued that whole time. And I was so proud of the job that everybody did, whether they were working from home or working from here or out in the field in terrible conditions when the public was basically shut down. We just kept plugging away, and we put ourselves exactly where we planned on being in spite of pandemic having been there. And so when I look back, I thought, you know, at this point, it almost seems like a distant memory, but what seems real is all the progress that we made. So anyway, so two, three years became almost five, and I didn't have any plans to set any kind of modern-day record, but it just kind of worked out that way. I found a note on a whiteboard that I had kept from 2010 or '12 when I was in Malad's current job, in Selmo's old job. And it was in operations. And I had written a note when I was negotiating with Owens Valley on some stuff, and I wrote down, "Be a part of good public policy." And I look back, I know, I found out Sunday morning when I was packing my office up, and I thought about that, and I thought, I feel like I've had a chance to do that. And I feel like, you know, our board members over the years and the management team over the years has made that happen and made that be possible. And so I think at the end of the day, you know, we are, we're establishing public policy that not only moves the city forward, but moves the whole industry forward. And it's been, you know, an honor to be part of that and be able to be contributing to that. So thank you to everybody for everything. I want to, you know, one person that never gets thanked is Arlene, my assistant. She has kept me as on time as she could, in the right place, not overlap booked, you know, shepherded me through the last five years. My little team, Doug and Ty and Paul, that came on when we were just overwhelmed with customer issues and other things during the pandemic, and I had to have, had to have help in the exec office to chase problems. And they saved my neck and made the job doable. And besides all the management team and everyone who's leading and Aram coming back and taking on such a large role, it's made the job doable and enjoyable. So thank you all so much. I know we're in good hands coming on board. I'll be on the books in the background for the next couple of weeks, you know, being a support and trying to finish going through 40 years' worth of stuff and finding out who gets what. But anyway, today will be my last day as general manager, and I will miss that, but it's definitely time to move on. And so look forward to, as Aram says, spending more time with my family and my grandkids as well as trying to find places to cause trouble to hopefully do things that'll support the department on a bigger scale, you know, and the endeavors that we have to do. So again, thank you all so much for this honor and just keep charging for it. So thank you.
Now, thank you, Marty. And we have no doubt... We have no doubt that you'll be causing good trouble, as the saying goes. So we look forward to following you and your next steps and hoping that you enjoy it as much as you've enjoyed this part of your life and that the next phase is just something grateful and, I mean, something great for you and your family, and everybody gets to enjoy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty. Just make a couple other announcements as we move on. I mischaracterized a couple of the items, so we will be taking up L2, 10, and 11 when we get to that part of the agenda, so.
Could you clarify that? Are we striking 2, 10, and 11, or are we all doing?
On special.
Yeah. That'd be a special item.
Understood.
Only three is deferred, just to me.
Yeah, only three is deferred. Sure, it's only three. Three is deferred. Let's see. And we are also waiting... Marty's successor is waiting patiently over at the city council for them to do their thing this morning. So we wish Janice good luck with that and much patience. I don't think she's ever been to an LA city council. Maybe I listened to one before, so...
Lucky it's not a Friday.
Let's hope they're not doing public comment first. So that's always an education for me, the first time they go through that. There's a reason why people sign up for their new job before they do that, because otherwise... Moving right along. Public comment?
Public comment is open at this time. We have one public commenter, Melanie Winter. Please step forward. Please be reminded, please be mindful that you will have two minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Melanie Winter. I'm the founder and director of a nonprofit called The River Project, and we've been a collaborative partner with the department on dozens of projects over the last 27 years and have been, you know, productively involved in helping to develop such projects that the department has moved forward and continues to refer to positively in all press opportunities today. But I am here because there is an unresolved invoice, and I need to get it managed. End of last year, I was diagnosed with stage IV lung cancer, and I've been in treatment ever since. So I have a bit of an urgency to get this resolved. I began four months ago at the direction of Anselmo Collins to send this to the claims department, the attention of Marty and Anselmo, but apparently it never got to them. It was sent back to me, and I was told to send it to the commission. I sent it to the commission as directed, reached out, learned that the commission secretary did not send it to the commission, but sent it back to the claims department. So I've done as directed, as always, in my partnership with DWP, and yet I am still owed an undisputed outstanding debt. And I was hoping to have it resolved before Marty left. Started this four months ago. I just want to make sure it gets into your hands. I brought one copy. I brought one copy because my printer was running low, and I didn't have time yesterday to go out and get the big fancy thing. So if you, if someone wouldn't mind, I'm happy to give this to the commission president and so that you all, all the commissioners can have one and Anselmo and Marty can have one, because I was asked to get it into their hands four months ago. I'd have done my best, followed all directions, but none of you have seen it yet.
Nope.
So I have brought it in person as a last-ditch effort. And I do hope that we can get this resolved soon, and I'm happy to answer anybody's questions here or offline or at another time, but I appreciate your attention.
And we wish you a continued good health.
Thank you.
You look very well today.
Thank you.
Your voice is strong.
Thank you. I appreciate that so much.
Yeah, I'm sure it's not easy to make the trek under illness, so we appreciate you being here, and we'll ensure that all of us receive the materials and review.
Thank you.
And we will find out what the holdup is, and someone will be in touch with you.
If I can get a copy, since I'll have some time on my hands, I can.
Art Castro would be the staffer who can be of most help to you in answering any questions from the department side.
And best of luck in your fight.
Thank you so much.
That's it?
Public comment is now closed.
Support by the general manager. Marty?
The last time you have to listen to me give a update, but it's okay. I do have a few items, so I'll try to get to them quickly. So thank you. First of all, this is Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and it's a time we, you know, we reflect on the contributions that these communities have made throughout our nation and our local community, as well as the large number of folks who are part of this, part of this cultural group here at the department. We have activities lined up for the month. We did a supplier diversity fair last Thursday, was it? Last Thursday, May 9th. And that was well received. I'll let Greg talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Thank you. And then we have a, they have a Board of Public Works Day of Service planned for May 18th, and they also have planned a fireside chat with City of LA and Water and Power Leadership Team members, and that's yet to be scheduled. We do, you know, make a real effort, and Greg's mentioned in the past, to recognize all the special months and the groups calling out the people, the different cultures that make up our city, as well as the department. So want to, you know, certainly recognize the AA NHPI group and their contributions and look forward to the events that they have coming up this month. We had our second annual Women's Career Wellness Expo last, was it last Saturday? Two Saturdays ago, Saturday before, two Saturdays ago. And Greg, I'll let you do a recap of that. We had tremendous results to turn out, and we have a slideshow, I think, as well that. So go ahead and real slideshow, and Greg can tell us a little about the expo. Go ahead.
Sure thing. Thank you, Marty. It was a really outstanding event. I'll start by saying that we were fortunate in having both our board president and our chief operating officer welcoming more than, I think it was 2,900 attendees at the event. Fantastic. We also were fortunate to have council member Imelda Padilla, who gave a keynote address, really, you know, celebrating the openness of LEDW P and inviting women in to learn more about our career opportunities, which she had remarked that that had not always been the case, that DWP employment seemed to be a bit of a mystery to some parts of our communities. But with that being said, fantastic opening remarks, but more importantly, the various vendor booths that were staffed by various parts of our department, water system, power system, various organizations in the joint side as well, showcasing the many rich career opportunities that we offer to the communities. We also had our health partners there providing information around women's wellness and the interaction with the kids. We had our employee resource groups there as well, such as National Society of Black Engineers Chapter here at DWP, Society of Women in Engineers Chapter, as well as our Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers Chapter. So all of the rich content, interactions, and engagement made this an outstanding event. We look forward to the continued partnership with IBW Local 18, Sean McLeod, and Latonya Bogan from my office partnered in developing this event, and that's under the Women's Council leadership. So with that being said, I can't say, I could only say but great things about the impact of events like this on our communities. So thank you, Marty, for the chance to share on that.
Thank you. And thank you for you and your team for leading that, as well as our partners with IBW. As Greg mentioned, you know, over 2,500 people, I think we had close to 2,900 people that we had show up was amazing for the second year. And it shows that there's a need and a desire for this, so it's really a great success. We have another important event coming at the same location this Saturday. It's the Annual Lineman's Rodeo. And so this will be a competition with our Water and Power crews and other power crews from around the region competing to go on to, you know, toward the national competition for, and we've brought trophies from the winning teams, winning apprentices, and things like that in the past. So we know we have great results from this. Everybody takes a lot of pride in it. It'll also be a big event. There should be at least 1,000 or 1,500 people there, a lot of families, a lot of activities. So, and it's not just open to people in the industry, but it's open to the public. So we're hoping to get a great turnout, and I'm hoping if you have a chance. Simon, what's the actual time on that? It starts pretty early, doesn't it?
It starts at eight o'clock, but we encourage people to get there as early as possible.
Yeah, so a lot of events going on and lots to see, and it really showcases what our crews do. And so I hope that the board will have a chance to stop by, as well as all the employees, whether you're working water, power, or anywhere else in the department. It's, it is absolutely a spectacle to see, so it's great, great to be there, so.
No, thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing it on Saturday. Not climbing, but watching. Your liability insurance doesn't want me going up there.
Yeah, the folks from here will actually go to the National Rodeo in Kansas in October, so. So very cool. Yeah, so wish our crews good luck on that. We talked about the Science Bowl a few, gosh, probably a month or so ago. And so the team from North Hollywood High that won our Science Bowl went to Washington, DC, and they did take second place out of 67 teams from around the country. So congratulations to them again. That's, again, it's a, it's a competition that's organized by Department of Energy and something that we've been hosting here for a number of years, as long as I can remember, can remember, so that's 40 right there. So it's a longstanding tradition, and we're very proud to support the local team and see that they've done so well, as they traditionally do. Joe, you want to talk a little about the Customer Service Support Saturdays? We had other ones that we did recently.
Sure, just continuing with these events that we hold in the community. On April 20th at North Hills Watson Crenshaw Customer Service Centers, we assisted 178 customers with their transactions, as well as applying for bill assistance programs. A total of 45 Lifeline applications and 76 EasySave applications were also completed. I want to thank our customer service staff for their work in doing this, as well as the public affairs staff who supports them. I'm very pleased to report that on the EasySave program, we've increased enrollment there over the last three years by 27% in that program. So we've got some results to show for it. It's also a part of our efforts to better engage our customers as they get caught up on their bills and enroll in level pay, as well as our extended payment arrangements for customers who fell behind during the pandemic.
And I'll say to the board, if you've ever, I know that Commissioner Binder's seen this, but if you've ever seen our folks in action in the community, they are remarkable with the public. I mean, they are the best ambassadors we could ever ask for, and the level of expertise and patience that they have to really help people with their situation, walk them through it, is remarkable. And so we appreciate the fact they take time out on their weekend to go do this for the communities that we serve. I'm going to turn it back over to Greg, since he's got the best slideshows, and tell us about the Supplier Diversity Fair and how that went last week.
Absolutely. Thank you, Marty. And this Supplier Diversity event also was in recognition and celebration of AA NHPI Month. And so with that being said, we're also uplifting small business inclusion on DWP contracting opportunities. This was a collaboration between the Asian Business Association of Los Angeles, the Pacific Asian Consortium for Employment, PACE, and also the Asian American Architects and Engineers Association. So with that, we had more than 250 people in attendance. It featured our very own DWP senior architect, Sammy Wong, presenting on the JFB renovation and modernization project, as well as the La Crete's Hollywood Customer Service Center project. And this was intended to promote the awareness of these important DWP projects and the subcontracting opportunities that that will create. We followed that presentation up with a panel discussion hosted by the Asian American Architects and Engineers Association on the Progressive Design Bill Project Delivery Method. And so it was moderated by Nathan Kim, who is an AAAE board member, as well as three panel members from the Asian American Architects and Engineers Association, representing the builders, representing the architects, and also representing the small businesses. With that, we followed it up with a networking event where small business and prime contractors can interact and build relationships. We also had our water, power, and supply chain services representatives sharing information about how to do business with DWP and our upcoming contracting opportunities, as well as PACE and Meriwether and Williams providing supportive resources for the small business community. So with that being said, it was a very impactful event. We plan to do more of these so that we can promote small business inclusion on the important contracts that we are advertising. So thank you, Marty.
Thanks, Greg. I'd like to ask Aram to give an update on the Work Hub, the model that they've set up on the sixth floor and getting rave reviews.
So I think the board has seen some pictures, but we actually opened it up on Monday, so it's fully ready to be deployed. We're waiting on some staffing, and we are going to do a full opening on the 22nd of this month. The idea is to have a hub that is kind of custom-made for employees to come in and choose the way they work in those hubs, that has the resources of, you know, technology, printing capabilities, and individual work groups or groups that can be in small conferences or large training rooms. So it's a flexible area where, this is the first one that we've opened up on the sixth floor of this building. We also have snack bar, you know, to provide the employees with just the light snacks and coffee and water, so they can, they can use it for a collaborative approach for meeting other groups and having a very flexible and fun workplace that we want to, we want to have. So the idea is to learn from this hub and use it to build the next one, which is going to be at the Eagle Rock Plaza and 6060 Supalvita. So we are planning on having about 10 or 13, 14 of these hubs all across the city to kind of take the workforce and distributed workforce across the city to be, to be using these hubs in lieu of driving across the city to report to a location, you know, like such as this building. So that's the idea, and we welcome the board members to go down there and take a look at it and to give us your feedback on how it looks like. But I just want to have the employees that actually made this happen come in next board meeting and recognize them. They've done a phenomenal job, from the architects to construction crews, to IT resources, to human resources, administrative, everybody pulled together to make this hub work. So I just want to thank the employees that made it happen and looking forward for more.
No, appreciate our, and I took a tour of it with you the other day and was very impressed. And I understand also, in addition to being a more conducive workspace, it's a lot cheaper to stand up, to do this way than, you know, putting individual cubbies and individual offices and all the rest of it together. So it's also.
Yeah, very economical. We can actually take everything that we have on the sixth floor, which we are planning on taking all the furniture and everything we have, very easy to dismantle and reassemble somewhere else. And the idea is to have a distributed work locations where employees can, can report to and do their jobs without getting through the stress of driving all across the city to get their jobs done.
That's great, great. Other comments on the workspace? Thank you for that.
So one very last item. A week ago Saturday, both us and LA Sanitation were recognized by the Discovery Cube of their annual Cube Award. Discovery Cube is the, you know, it is the city's children's museum. It was relocated from downtown. Wreckin' Parks was moving it forward. And then, and when it came down to programming the exhibits, they decided to contract with Discovery Cube to do that, who's done a phenomenal job. Us and LA SAN were actually the, really the founding funders of it at the time, because, and if you look at the exhibits inside, they really focused on, on, on water and sanitation issues. They're a number of hands on exhibits. So the Cube continues to grow, and we're hoping to continue to grow more things that feature things such as sustainability, renewable energy, exposing kids to career ideas and career paths in the future that'll hopefully support us and people in our industry. But anyway, we're happy to be honored. It was their 10th anniversary, and I remember, I remember 15 years ago when it was an open building looking for a future that had just been built by the city, and 10 years ago when the ribbon cutting was done. So it was nice to be honored here for our joint roles the two agencies have played.
No, Marty, thank you. I'm, as a previous board member for the children's museum and part of the group that made the decision to move to the valley, which, by the way, caused half the board to resign when we did that. I remember that. I mean, we took a little offense to that whole thing.
I know, I was going to say, hey.
But we're used to that in the valley. But it was an underserved part of the city. Kudos to DWP and to, you know, sanitation for seeing the need and helping meet it. It is a great program for students, and it is full year-long with kids who get a chance to see something they wouldn't have. The initial funding, as you mentioned, public dollars first and then raise the private dollars, but then Councilman Padilla.
Yes.
Alex, this was his project and largely responsible for a lot of the public money in there. So it continues to be a gem out there and encourage people to, to visit it and take the tour. And you don't need to pack a lunch, it's not that far. You know, people have a lot of perceptions, but it's a great, it's a great resource.
Yeah.
If I could comment also, I thank you for the support of that program. I think as we move towards a sustainable future for Los Angeles, the K through 12 education piece is so important, ensuring that our youth have an understanding of our water and power systems and an understanding of the challenges that we're facing in terms of climate change, biodiversity, et cetera. So, you know, appreciate that exhibit work that's been done and education work. Also, as a local who grew up here, I'm sure that the students aren't watching our board meeting, but just in case, I do want to say congratulations to the North Hollywood team. That's my alma mater, so go Huskies. And it's great to hear of their success in the Science Bowl and our support of that. And then lastly, just wanted to say thank you to all of our staff who do work hard on the customer outreach side, not only in the fairs that were discussed, but since our last meeting, I think, if I've got the time correct, because everything's a bit of a blur, things are so busy right now. But we also had our Earth Day Fair at Chatsworth Nature Preserve, and I got to meet with some of our team who were doing high-voltage education and teaching the public about safety, and they just did such a fantastic job, and it's such important outreach, as well as the whole water operations team who helped support and organize that event and everybody who was out there. So just so appreciative of our staff and the work they do in these types of public outreach events, and really looking forward to the Lineman's Rodeo. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Marty, thank you. Moving right along. Ray, your advocate?
Good morning. Camden Collins, Deputy Executive Director for the Office of Public Accountability. Dr. Pickle is down at the City Council at the moment, dealing with the general manager approval process. So you have me today. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
We have reviewed and support approval of items four, five, six, seven, and nine. As some of you may know, we tend to wait until there's an NOC done and look at the cost-benefit analysis of the department and opine on such things when they come before you, which is why we have no comment on item 11. There are no NOCs that are ripe at this point. So that's the only reason that we wouldn't have an opinion yet. And you have a report from us on items four and five. I'd be happy to take any questions at a time you find most congenial.
Anyone have questions on those items? This is as congenial as any.
I don't have any specific questions, but Camden, I wonder if you could take us through the, just the most salient points. the, just the most salient points in this report from the O P A's office that we got this morning.
Well, let me start with the three prior recommendations you've heard before, one of which is already in your power resolution, which is a factual finding about the powerhouse program. So, we can check the box there and say that it's done. The second has to do with the 2B trouble tickets, which we felt you needed to have a target. I took a look at the pace of the pole replacement on the year, which is about 80% of target, and costs are running above target by quite a bit, which might be one of the reasons they're balancing that out. But it would be useful to the board to have a target when you start talking about compliance and the timeframes you need to get in compliance, because it is embedded in the budget, and it would be more helpful for you to know what they think they can do. One of the problems is the data reconciliation is quite difficult for them right now. They've got another item on your agenda for an inspection service, but it doesn't really look like that will help change their goal or target much. It's to do with other assets of the system. So, some utilities use independent inspectors to try and figure out exactly how to right-size the labor component of this, and we've been talking to the department about that since 2014. So, it seems like it's a good time in 2024 to maybe have a sense of the vintaging of these worker safety poles. They're required to be put in compliance in 12 months. If the oldest ticket is 2019, they might be able to get through 19 and 20 by the time the year is over. But there's a lot of backlogged operations and maintenance and understaffing on the operations and maintenance of the department. So, it seems like having more informed opinion about what's in the budget would be useful to the board going forward. So, that's the second recommendation you've previously heard from us about. The third would be the $1.5 million request of the City Council to boost the low-income credit. Last Friday, the sanitation department also made such a request. Currently, they have grandfathered half of their low-income credit and half is general fund funded. And so, this request simply asks us to not wait any longer in requesting of the City Council an inflation adjustment for the low-income credits. That can be done either today or at a future point. It's not required to be in the budget. It's just a nice time to put everything before the council that you want them to consider as part of their budget cycle, which will be completing in June. So, those are the three recommendations you've heard of before this report issued. The rest of the report goes over as many salient points as I'm sure you found. If you have any particular questions, I think you could, the general tenor of the report is that it is probably not enough to do all the things the department would like to do. And the department is fairly backlogged in operations and maintenance and understaffed. So, that will continue to be a struggle to get a balance between the repairs and the replacement, replacement being capital and repairs being more of an expense.
Camden, the report you did previously on, on the poles, can I get a copy of that, please?
Sure, would be happy to.
I mean, I'm sure it's here somewhere. I just, you know, now that I'm, you know, a four-week person in here, I'm not sure where to find everything, so I thought I would ask.
Absolutely. We get reports twice a year from the department on their progress and their unit costs. So, I'd be happy to provide those.
I appreciate that. Anybody else on this?
I have a, I have a couple of questions. One relates to the budget, the income side of the budget, and it also relates to number six on municipal bonds. So, this week, S and P released a report about the 17 to 20% of U.S. counties that are facing compound exposures to acute climate crises and what that's going to do to the municipal bond market. L A County is among, you know, those to be, expected to be most severely impacted in the next 20 to 90 years, which is the farthest they went out. And they measure this along three or four different climate scenarios. I am wondering, I don't, I don't think we've done a department analysis yet on what climate change impacts could do to our municipal bond holdings, knowing that they might create shocks in the system that require us to spend more money than anticipated repair and making system repairs, et cetera, stuff that we started to see with things like Hurricane Hillary and increasing periods of high temperatures. But I'm wondering if that's something we could get some support from the O P A's office on considering.
Absolutely. We've had a long discussion on off-balance-sheet financing for the water side of the business, in part because they want the flexibility that the Power Department has for off-balance-sheet financing. And one of the dilemmas is our office has been quite clear with finance that because of the very large nature of the city of Los Angeles and the limited amount of FEMA help that you could expect, that you should really never be leveraged to such a point that you don't have a reserve ability to issue capital for a major disaster. A major disaster would be one where you ought to plan on being able to move your capital structure 10 or 20 percentage points in order to fund something like the North Earthquake. If you are already over-levered from a prudency standpoint, and you've used off-balance-sheet financing and regulatory assets to get even more leverage, you have zero capacity to deal with an emergency. And we don't think that's very prudent. So, we've been having that discussion with the department for a good decade now.
Okay. Thank you. I'd love to speak a little bit more about that after the meeting.
Sure.
Other questions or comments for O P A?
No, just appreciate these are very thoughtful recommendations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving right along. We're going to go back, let's go back to the items that we were delaying, but are still going to take up, items L two, then 10, then 11. Who's got L two? Anybody in particular? L two is the renaming of the Hollywood Reservoir Pollinator Garden in memorial of former Assembly Member Cindy Montanez.
That's L one.
L one.
I think that's L one.
I was going to say.
That's two. It's L one, but we'll take it up anyhow.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you for that. Just want to take these as a block or just want to go individually? How do we?
We can do a block on the non-special items. Would you like me to make a motion?
Please.
Okay. Motion to approve items one, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 12.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any objection to all members present being recorded as aye votes on those items?
No, sir.
Got objection, those are adopted. And now we'll go back to the ones that Narit didn't mention, didn't put on the special list. So, starting with item two.
Good afternoon. Councilwoman Nourban, Corporate Environmental Affairs. And L two is one of our items, and this is the Little Lake crossover project. Do you have questions for me?
I do. No presentation needed, just a question. I wanted to talk a little about, a bit about the SECO process and the mitigation efforts for tribal cultural resources. What, in the SECO process, what we anticipate finding, what the mitigation efforts are going to look like? I know Big Pine hasn't been very responsive to us as far as I can tell, so how are we mitigating our mitigation practices to make sure there's more definitive tribal involvement, since I know we have sort of a, an issue with Big Pine where they, they have an internal tribal dispute at the moment that we're moving around?
Yes. And so, we will be contacting them again before we start, and we'll try to encourage them to engage with us. And of course, Commissioner McGraw, we'd like you to help out with that as well. And we do have mitigation measures in there that they are, you know, welcome to come up and watch the excavation, which is very little during the process. This is installing 183 linear feet of pipe between L A A one and L A A two.
And in the SECO for mitigation, if we encounter tribal cultural resources, is something stop, move? And if Big Pine doesn't agree to it, will we have other tribal observers there?
Yes, all tribes are invited.
Okay.
That would like to come. We'd like Big Pine to be there, and we will have a monitoring compensation agreement with them.
Great.
You reach out to the Native American Heritage Commission at that point?
Yes.
Do you think across resources?
Yeah.
Beautiful. That's all I had. Thanks, Catherine.
You got it.
Any other comments on L two? Is it the same comments on 10 and 11?
No.
Okay. Anything else on L two for anyone?
No.
Motion and a second to approve.
I'll move to approve item L two.
Second.
Any objections to all members being reported as aye? Seeing none, the measure passes. Let's go to L 10.
All right, we have Malad Dagavi, Director of Water Operations, come to present and answer questions.
Good morning, Commissioners, General Manager. Marty, again, I cannot say enough about Allah, how much we love you. Wish you the very best. We're here, we have a short presentation, about three slides, and we're more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, go for it. Should I go?
Yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Jaime Valenzuela. I'm the manager of the Owens Lake Dust Mitigation Program. I've been at Owens Lake for 14 years. This year, we come here with a recommendation for this board to adopt a resolution to pay Great Basin Unified Air Pollution Control District's annual fee of $9,520,637, less a reserve policy of $0. These fees are associated with Great Basin's dust control research, monitoring, and other related activities resulting from D W P's water gathering and conveyance and storage activities in Inyo and Mono Counties. The fiscal year 2425 payment fees are in response to the Board Order 240502-1, and the payment is due January 16th. Failure to pay will result in fines of up to $5,000 a day. In fact, if we don't approve it on this board date, we might miss that date. Over the last, since 1995, these are the annual fees assessed to us, to D W P under S B 270, Senate Bill 270, which gives the Great Basin the authority to charge these fees, and it's all tied to Health and Safety Code 42316. Over the past 20 years, plus years, we've, 29 years, it's been, the department has paid $154 million towards this. Approximately 82% of the district's employees are funded by S B 270. More recently, the district has been including money to monitor Mono Lake and has been including that, those Owens Lake fees with Mono Lake fees. You can see here, over the last few years, there's been a really dramatic spike. Between last year and this year, we saw increase of 17%, and since 2016, the fees have doubled.
Why? Why have they doubled?
There's a variety of reasons. We have capital expenditures that are included, increase in retirement, there's increase in monitoring, we have professional services that have increased. Pretty much across the board, we've seen an increase. Yeah.
So, retirement money is involved in these fees?
Yes.
Of our personnel?
No, these are the Great Basin Unified Air Pollution Control District's personnel. We pay fees, which basically takes care of their retirements, their health and benefits.
So, we're not really doing anything with this money that's stopping the issue. We're just paying, in essence, we're just paying, we're not really doing anything to mitigate the dust or anything with the money.
So, you're absolutely right, Commissioner. That's on top of the work that we do to mitigate dust. Great Basin as being the regulator, they're there to ensure that we comply with the regulations. So, that's where, basically, it's kind of a very unique setup.
I would say it's very unique.
It is, and, but we pay for the district to regulate and monitor the work that we do on Owens Lake and on Mono Basin.
We pay the district to regulate us?
Correct.
Basically. That was, I assume, that was the district's order that came out to do that.
And then, and their retirement system is funded largely by us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I'll move on.
Yeah, please.
So, here are some increases that I mentioned. Capital equipment purchases of three new air monitors, construction and replacement of Mono Lake shore solar power system, that was $400,000, just that item alone. Replacement of lab equipment associated with an upgrade of line power to Bishop, to the Bishop office. So, they have a, they do their own lab analysis of some of the monitoring equipment and the results there. Employee retirement, as I mentioned, and then there's some transportation and travel. This year, staff are traveling to New Orleans for an E P A conference. And that's all I have.
They attend that they want us to pay for it as opposed to them.
Yes.
Obviously, I mean, all the items special, my concern with Great Basin is always regulatory creep. I think we're all concerned about that, especially as the feeling across the department is that we've substantively reached, you know, the mitigation protocols that were intended to be reached in the Owens Lake area. I think, obviously, as Commissioner Pinder points out, there is a negative incentive here, a negative profit incentive on behalf of our regulator, which I think is perverse. But my real concern comes from the board letter, which in the submitted comments show budget inquiries and investigations and variances, perhaps even errors in their budgeting that we submitted comments for and asked for additional clarification to. And I had no clarity in the board letter as to whether we received an answer from them about those potential errors or variances. I'm wondering, do we have any additional recourse to get that information now? I realize we have to vote today or else we're going to get penalized. I'm not going to hold that up, but I'm wondering, you know, are there any more carrots and sticks in our bag of tricks here?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for that question, Commissioner. We do make comments, both written and verbal, at the Great, for the Great Basin when they consider the budget. We bring these issues up. The Great Basin is not required to respond to us as part of these comments, and there are course of actions that we can take in terms of the next step, what we have to pay first, and there are administrative processes that we could take, and we could take legal processes, but those are kind of afterward, after we pay. But in terms of any power that we may have or to respond to, for audits and so forth, we have no such ability. Great Basin has assured us that they have their own accounting firms that audit their information, and they're complying with all the regulations. Unfortunately, we are not privy to the audit findings.
I'm reassured.
But, I was going to say, we're not privy to, but we're at the mercy of.
Exactly. Okay, thank you so much. So, in this case, we'll vote to pay today, I presume, and then will, are any of the actions that we asked for clarification of, or any of the errors that we pointed out, do they rise to the level of something that we might consider an administrative action or even a legal action on?
Well, that's something that we could come to you and kind of get directions from your office. We, in terms of administrative, City Attorney could of course help answer that question.
We can discuss that more in close session.
So, perhaps the board could schedule this for a close session discussion next board meeting.
Thanks, Malad.
Okay, thank you.
Let's do that, please.
Okay.
Well, let's have the subtitle, Milk the Cow. That's what this sounds like to me.
And I'll go with that as you move the item.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All members voted. All members voted aye without objection? Thank you.
You both.
It's just, you know, sometimes you got to acknowledge the imbalance in power, you know, as we look for new ways to deal with it, so.
Julie and I lived this life for many years.
Yes.
Yes, I imagine. All right. 11, please.
Okay, I'd like to invite our Senior Managing Engineer over Project Management from the Water System, Afelia Rubio, and she has as manager from Bureau Contract Administration as well.
This is me, too. I actually don't need a presentation on this, I just have a quick question, and I got my other questions answered before this, so I'm sorry, I should have gotten this back on the regular agenda. The only question I have left is, how does the department decide which construction jobs get PLAs and which don't? I didn't, I couldn't find clarity on that in the board letter, and no one I asked could tell me.
Pretty much what we're doing is any project that's going to construction, where there's significant labor or enough labor to add a PLA, those are the projects that we will be adding PLAs to.
What counts as significant enough? I guess that's my question. What's the trigger for a PLA?
Now, I'm going to ask Ian, who's here with the Bureau of Contract Administration.
That's great.
Well, that's cool. Let me answer the question for DDP even though I don't work here, that's awesome. Oh, you look great. Jesus, I'm on the record, okay? I had to be careful. When you're talking about significant labor, it's a project that has enough time to accomplish all of the metrics and requirements within the PLA. So certainly, the PLA has language as it relates to no strikes, lockouts, stoppages of any kind. Okay, those easy, but this PLA has targeted hiring requirements in it, where at least a portion of the project hours have to go to those that are local.
Yeah.
Now, while that's a good, a feel-good story, if you will, for this PLA, there are potential monetary penalties for noncompliance of that. And we want to make sure that projects that get the PLA added to it have the ability to ultimately achieve that goal, and you don't have me, mad contractors coming up here, you know, shaking a torch, if you will, saying, hey, you know, you put this PLA in my project, and now you're assessing me a penalty, but I didn't have enough time to ultimately achieve those metrics. So I don't want to put a dollar amount per se, but generally, somewhere in the range of $5 million would be a good target. But again, there are some PLA projects that, for whatever reason, that are worth more than, or some projects rather, that are worth more than $5 million that don't have a PLA. There are some that are worth less that do. So that's a nice range unofficially, but ultimately, I think DWP really needs to come up with what they believe is a, is a good baseline for that. And I'm more than willing to assist, when in regard that I can.
That'd be very helpful. I mean, there is an argument to be made for maintaining our flexibility there. I mean, I, my understanding of this, and I think the reason no one can answer this question for me definitively before the meeting, was that there seems to be a little bit of a reasonableness test that we kind of undertake subjectively in the contract administration process, saying that like, you know, we believe because of the nature or scope of this contract that a PLA isn't a reasonable thing to attach or not because of the kind of or amount of labor. I understand that now, thank you so much. I would be interested in speaking to you probably, Aram, a little bit more about if we want to establish a harder line as to what kind of contracts we want to attach to PLAs or not, or if we want to maintain that flexibility, which we can do offline.
I think we have the criteria, as it was mentioned, you know, how we determine or not, but I think it'll be good to put it in, in kind of like a direct directive or clarification of what is the criteria we're using. For example, local labor versus, you know, companies that are bidding on jobs that could import labor from outside, things like that, the thresholds on the dollar and the thresholds on job creation for a permanent.
I was especially interested in the latter, and that's why I brought this up, because it really directly, it directly speaks to our relationship with our labor partners through those PLAs. And I know we've gotten ourselves in trouble in the past not having a lot of clarity around things like this with our labor partners, and I think it'd be nice to get a directive.
I'll take an action item to kind of put those principles on, on some, a policy that we could discuss with the board.
Great. Thank you.
No, I've, I've been a fan of PLAs, particularly when I served on the Metro Board, particularly if you have, if you have time constraints and deadlines, there are no strike provisions in the PLA, you know, everyone looks at PLAs, it's all pro-labor. It's not. It's somewhat balanced, and frankly, the no-strike provision being a big part of meeting, whether it's local deadlines or federal deadlines, what have you for completion, is an important part of that whole thing. So I think this will be helpful, so.
Yep.
Thank you for doing that. But, thank you both.
Thank you.
George, you're going to move it?
I will, I'll move to approve item L11.
Right.
Second?
Second. Any objections? Everyone aye? Everyone happy? Hi, Mia, welcome. Good to see you. We knew you were busy, so.
Yes.
Verity continues, huh?
Verity continues.
We did do, we did the Marty item earlier, Mia, but I know you wanted to be here if you want to make any remarks for Marty. I think we'll welcome that before we finish, right? Richard, would that be all right? I know she was hoping to say a few things.
Yes, well, I won't be long, because I know you have, I, I, I've known Marty Adams for probably 25 years. He actually, one of my, my, the, one of my partners for a while was, he went to school with, with her in Burbank, yes? Anyway, he's been someone I've always looked up to, who, and someone who I considered a partner in all things water and power, but also the environment. And it's, I've been really, you know, I'm proud of the, I've, I've been very proud of the opportunity to actually work together, and the, his, his knowledge base is vast, and he's creative, kind, collaborative, and just, you know, I like the smile. And I look forward to, to, you know, to learning what a, what a nice retirement looks like. So, so, so thank you for everything, Marty, and, and you're, you're a good leader.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I'm proud that you have the Marty Adams autographed illustration from Silver Lake Reservoir from 25 years ago in your office.
Oh, yeah. It's like, I have to cash, cash out on that one, yes.
I think I said approved, but that was many public meetings ago.
All right, moving right along. Just to this point. Management reports. We're having a budget presentation, but a shorter version than was proposed originally.
Oh, okay. We do have a budget presentation that covers items four and five, and I have Mary Ann Anz, the Budget Director, to walk through a few slides.
Do I need to look for the item, I guess? I thought it automatically shows up.
Oh. Yeah. The item, you approved items four and five on the consent agenda, but do you have a few slides?
Okay. All right, there we go. Thank you and good morning, Board President and Commissioners. I'm Mary Ann Anz, and I'm here to present our proposed final budget for 2425. It is a condensed version, so it's at a high level, and the appendix is included senior AGM and cost element details for, for your reference, but I will not be walking you through that. So our combined water and power net appropriations, proposed final budget is $8,646 million. This is spending net of reimbursements. This includes $4.2 billion, roughly 49% of the power fund. This includes the combined capital and operation and maintenance expenditures. That's roughly 49% of the total spending on the water revenue fund. The proposed capital and O&amp;M spending is $1.7 billion, roughly 20% of the total spend. The fuel and purchased power budget is about $1.6 billion, and that's roughly 19% of the, of the proposed net appropriations. And that represents, actually supports 48.6% of RPS target for the upcoming year. Purchased water is 2%, $215 million for next year, and all the other expenditures are roughly $898 million, roughly 10%, and those are for bond redemption and interest, property taxes, self-insurance, and other non-operating expenditures.
How much of an increase is this over last year's? Just roughly?
Yeah, on this slide, this next slide, so it's roughly a 2.5% increase. So this slide here captures some of the key highlights between the preliminary and the final that we presented back in March. That 2.5% equates to $238 million decrease. So some of the key changes at a high level on the water revenue fund include the O&amp;M increased by $13 million, and that was largely due to the High Period MBR, the membrane bioreactor pilot project cost increase. That actually increased for next year, as well as some slight increases in the cloud infrastructure O&amp;M cost. The capital had just minor increases across the board, most notable was the water infrastructure tools and equipment slightly increased for next year, and also the water share of the ERP, ERP project, as well as fleet costs increased. The purchased water remained unchanged at 215 compared to, to the preliminary, and that's based on water resources. They maintained the average hydrology year forecast that was done earlier this calendar year. On the power revenue fund, capital decreased by $273 million, and the, the majority of those changes and reestimations was refinement in the contracting, proposed spending that was reduced by $226 million. That's largely due to project schedule changes. The notable projects impacted by that include the McCulloch-Victorville Lines 1 and 2 compensation study, or project, the retrofit of the Haynes Units 8 through 10 cooling system, valley generating stations demolition of the old units, and lastly, power initially had planned the upgrade of the Tarzana Olympic Line to be contracted out. However, after further review, that's going to be done in-house. Another notable increase, a decrease, I should say, on the capital was the land and structures estimate. We had $24 million earmarked in the prelim. That was reduced, and power system will be looking for opportunities to use department-owned land and/or leased land for, for future potential EV hubs. So on the O&amp;M, that increased by $43 million between the prelim and the final, and the majority of those increases were either updates or corrections to the reimbursements for various line items, specifically the project for the Pine Tree Wind Power Plant, and then also the Victorville-McCulloch switching stations. The reimbursements were updated, they corrected those reimbursements, which drove up the O&amp;M, as well as, lastly, the Castaic Maintenance and Hydro Stations maintenance cost increase. The fuel and purchased power did slightly decreased by $6 million, and that was mostly due to some delays in the Eland Solar Project, decreased costs for the Linden Wind, a project, as well as decreased debt service cost for the Windy Point Project. As far as the labor, the labor funding increased in totality by 10.3 million. One million of that is attributed to the APR, Proposed Increase, between the prelim and the final, there was a modest six position increase. Five is for customer service, one position is for meter services. So the proposed APR for this final budget is $14,036 positions. One million, again, is attributed to the new positions, and then the remaining nine is a result of various positions that were transferred between the GM Labor Planning Division and the Power Executive Office to divisions with lower budgeted vacancy rates. The, the final staffing includes funding for 12,216 positions. We're also occupied, as of March 31st, at 11,451 positions. This reflects headroom of over 760 positions, so there is room to grow between now and this next year's budget. The total compensation for the final budget is $2,958 million, and this reflects a $23.8 million increase compared to the prelim budget, 10 of which is the labor I spoke of earlier, and $13.4 million is attributed to increased projected healthcare costs that are included in the benefits column, $885 million. And just also to note and remind everyone, included in the labor, the $1.7 billion labor, there's $62 million included in that for hiring exempt substitute positions. This is for, to meet operational needs, and this is above and beyond the $14,036 APR budgeted positions. So the department will be offering clean, continue to offer clean, reliable, cost-effective water and power, and we will be investing in our sustainable water and power supplies, maintaining our water quality and power reliability, all while minimizing the impact on our customer rates. This slide provides the power revenue fund for the next year. The combined capital and O&amp;M expenditures for the power fund is $4,229 million. And this slide here depicts the various rate recovery classifications that are included on our financial plans. So the key area here is the Power System Reliability Program, PSRP. They're proposing $1.6 billion, roughly 38% of the total power revenue fund spending. This includes and covers generation, transmission, and distribution investments. The renewable portfolio standard is $475 million, roughly 11% of the total spending, and this notable project is the Barron Ridge Renewable Transmission is included in that, as well as the McCulloch-Victorville Lines 1 and 2 Transmission retrofit. The infrastructure presented here at $796 million, 19%, and that covers our in-basin generation additions and betterments on the capital, and also the O&amp;M is included. Energy efficiency is $182 million, that's the capital spending, roughly 4%. And all this is supported by the power share of the joint costs, and that's represented through the operating support of roughly $1.1 billion, 28% of, of the power revenue fund. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Simon to cover and talk about Power's key goals for this upcoming year.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Ann. Within power system, we have two major categories for driving this budget. One is reliability, and the second one is our energy transition efforts. Under power system reliability, as Mary Ann covered, we do have targets that we'd like to meet on the next program year. These are the, the key goals that we have, and we track this on a monthly basis. Over the past years, we have met or surpassed these targets. This is just an overhaul of our distribution system, replacement of poles and crossarms, as well as transformers throughout the system, and improving our reliability indices based on duration, as well as frequency of outages as well. So these are things that, items that we will report on a regular basis to the board and the public in terms of meeting our targets for reliability. Moving forward, on the energy, the energy transition, these are, these include our transmission upgrades, all our infrastructure programs, specifically within the distribution system on the EV hubs, making sure that we do have the EV infrastructure rollout, the program year, our generation facilities, the maintenance, as well as operations cost. And we do have a lot of customer-based incentives and programs, especially within the energy efficiency sector, that would like to really fully expand and make sure that energy efficiency will work our customers and reduce the demand. As we work a lot on the supply side, we are putting the necessary funding and resources on the demand side as well, to make sure that our customers get the best rate and consumption is managed efficiently. Next slide is a snapshot of our energy transition acceleration model. We will be adding additional renewable energy on the coming program year. Eland 1 and 2 solar projects are coming into completion, and it would add 400 megawatts to our capacity in the coming New Year's to our capacity in the coming New Year's. So this, there's increased purchase for those. On the right-hand side, you'd see significant improved funding for transmission projects. These are existing transmission lines that are being, you know, upgraded to be able to import additional renewable energy and integrate into the system. We will continue to do this between now and 2030. We have about 31 projects that are in the pipeline. These are projects that have already started in construction. So as these program years come in, we'll be spending more funding to support those. I think that would conclude Power Systems' updates.
Thank you, Simon. So the water fund, the combined total expenditures for capital and O and M for this next year is $1,705 million. This includes infrastructure at 651 million, roughly 38% of the total on the revenue fund. This is for the distribution mains, the trunk line, the infrastructure reservoir improvements. Next, we have the water quality at 343 million, or 20%. This covers our water treatment and our groundwater remediation efforts. We have the water supply at 275 million, or 16%, and that includes the Los Angeles Aqueduct Investments, our water conservation, recycled water and stormwater capture. And we also have the Owens Valley Regulatory. So this is 71 million of the combined capital and O and M, representing around 4%, and this includes the Owens Lake dust mitigation and the control. Joint share of the cost to support the water fund is 365 million for next year, roughly 22%. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jonathan Leong to share some of Water's key goals for this next upcoming year.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. So this budget supports a number of key programs and initiatives for us. One of them is our mainline replacement program. I think there's probably no more well-known asset category we have in our water system than our pipes. We have about 7,350 miles of pipeline in our network. Our goal next year is to replace about 45 miles of that, and that, we're happy about that because it gets us close to the point of the average expected lifetime of pipeline. So we're keeping pace with infrastructure replacements. I'd also like to add, we've been able to add, grow our mainline replacement crews from 20 to roughly 32 over the past decade. So I know a lot is talked about, the challenges we have with hiring additional staff, but a credit to our water distribution team under Mr. Breonia Lindsay, they've stayed committed, they hired, and they're able to onboard these folks safely and train them appropriately. So we're excited about that. We're also working on 6,900 miles of trunk line, which is transmission carrier-type pipe. I think Marty has discussed with some of the regional partners, our pipeline used to go from point A to point B. But when you're developing a regional, one water supply network, that water might actually have to flow from point B back to point A, depending on the time of year. So I think these investments in trunk transmission mains are very important for water supply reliability, as well as giving us the ability to move water around through the city at different times of the year. And of course, I think much has been discussed about the city's goal to reuse every drop of recycled water. We have a project going to take place at Donald C. Tillman, as well as operation next out at Hyperion. A master plan is in process, and those documents will be coming to you all by roughly December of this year, and there'll be more details on that, next slide. And this is a little bit about the water supply and some of those costs associated with it. And admittedly, this is a little bit of a crystal ball. This was predicted back in January, and as many of you know, with the climate change, rainfall and different conditions occur quite rapidly. So the main point to take away here is we probably will have a little bit higher aqueduct flow, a little bit reduced MWD purchase water, so I think that's good for our ratepayers. And I think our rate structure has a nice mechanism there where we do the quarterly adjustments on those pass-through charges. So again, the board does not have to, you know, have a magic wand and know exactly how many drops we're going to have. There is an ability to catch up on those and then correct those charges that we actually passed to our customers. But there should be an improvement because of the additional rainfall and snowpack that we got this, this spring. Next slide, please. And so we do have some water quality improvements planned in the near future. Some of you may have heard, we, we get high turbidity in silt during these high rainfall runoff periods. It's a challenge for us at our Los Angeles Aqueduct Filter Plant. It's a very high throughput, efficient plant, but for regulatory compliance, we do have to monitor and control the turbidity. And so there's Fairmont Sedimentation Plan is one of the major projects we have upcoming. It's close to $700 million, but it will actually help us reduce those sediments. It's also an immense current strategy we have in, at the Haywee Reservoir, where those sediments are accumulated to a point that we can't really control those. But it's very important for us to be able to handle those heavier periods of runoff. And we also have, you know, big, big projects here. We have three or four major groundwater remediation projects that are getting ready to come online, and these are so critical to our local water supply, right? We've been trying to store as much water from the stormwater capture, and now's the opportunity to clean that up and pump that out. So again, we're achieving the dual goals, primary to clean up the industrial contamination, but longer term, it does give us that flexibility when, when its demands are high, we can pump additional water. So we have to hung out North Hollywood, Central and North Hollywood West, as well as an NHOU 2IR site that we've working on, and all those are going to be coming online over the next six to 18 months. We're finalizing construction on that.
Going back for one sec, you mentioned that several of our storage facilities, I guess, are accumulating silt and sand. Do we have programs to remove that, or how are you dealing with that?
I think that will be part of a more studies on exactly what the most effective way to remove some of the sediment accumulation that we may have at our Haywee, North Haywee and South Haywee reservoirs. But I think this plant definitely gives us the flexibility to not have to utilize those structures to be able to effectively settle out those salts and turbidity.
I mean, I know there are, there are a series of gravel pits in the northeast San Fernando Valley that have a large capacity for something to fill them up at some point.
Yeah, these, these are located a little bit further north, but I think anything that we, we can work on as far as, even with LA County, as they do flood capture for us, if there's some, some benefits to using sedimentation as, as far as it may increase the capacity of some of their spreading operations, I think everything is an open option.
Yeah, I just assumed that finding, finding areas to store water, particularly near downtown or near around the city, are, is difficult because so many of those sites have been contaminated over the years and through the San Fernando Valley and others, that that, one of the biggest challenges in reclaiming and capturing more stormwater is where are we going to put them, so?
Yes, exactly. And I think that's where the inter-agency collaboration, us with the Regional Board, Department of Toxic Substance Control and others, really understanding kind of what that groundwater basin aquifer looks like, and ideally injecting and spreading in locations that are, are more clear of those contaminants.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I just wanted to know generally, and since I'm so new, what is the age of our oldest pipes?
It's a great question. Take Marty's career and quadruple it. In general, there's some factors. Age, age is, is important consideration for pipe, and we have some in the downtown areas that are installed, late 1800s, early 1900s. But what we have found is the life of the pipe sometimes depends on the corrosivity of the soil and the factors of safety, the thickness that was actually built in that original pipe. So just because maybe a pipe is a little bit older, if it was kind of of a different vintage and very thick, it has, we've been able to gain additional useful life. So that's where, as part of our asset management strategy, again, we look at those factors that, that influence the longevity of a pipe. And again, those are corrosivity of the soil, maybe fluctuating groundwater table, and pipe material and thickness, and the operating pressure, and we factor all that into an asset management program to, to target the most vulnerable pipe.
No, that made sense to me, thank you. And so we're not anywhere near, when we talk about contamination, we're not anywhere near a Flint, Michigan situation anywhere, are we?
No, we're, we're in a very good position. I, I think as far as lead in, in our system, we've done extensive inventories of our, our service lines, as well as the appurtenances and materials we've been using and installing over the past three decades. So we're in a very good spot as far as being, having no lead in our drinking water system. I think we're in a much unique place compared to, say, those that are on the East Coast or Mideast. They, they definitely face those challenges. As far as some of the other contaminants that we, we might have, again, these are part of the, the groundwater remediation facilities, I think, that are, are so critical, allow us to target volatile organic compounds, or one for dioxin, and maybe in the future, some of the perfluorinated compounds if we see them, so. Yeah. And we, just for, so we, you know, Flint had lead service laterals, a lot of Washington DC did also, so we do not have any of those. There was a time we had some leaded goosenecks that we probably removed those back in the 1980s, and those were from the meter to the, to the service lateral. So, so we do not have lead. We actually had a large settlement with a vendor who had supplied materials that had too much lead in the brass, because there's lead in the brass to make it machinable, and that's all been changed out as well. So we're in very good shape that way.
Thank you.
And then we just have a couple more slides just to show you. For the power system, a residential customer who uses 500 kilowatt hours per month, right now, as of January, their bill is $103. With the proposed power system budget, that rate would go up approximately one cent per kilowatt hour and would be supported by $1,126 million of borrowing. And then on the next slide, on the water side, you can see that as of January, the water customer with 10, 100 cubic feet of billing per month would be $90. This rate will be going up effective July 1st, it'll be $110 based on the spending plan, and that will be supported by $432 million of borrowing. So this is how the water system and power system rates compare to similarly situated And then with the approval of items four and five, we will submit this to the City Council for their purposes, and then we will be coming back to the board in June for the pass-through factors correlating to this budget.
Marty, can you talk to us about some of the functional transfers between the systems and joint? Some of the efficiencies you hope to achieve there, or why some of those big transfers are being made?
The, well, so, and, and want to talk about, about some of these, chime in on, but, you know, one of the, one of the things interesting in this whole budget process is you really have two businesses, you know, a water business and a power business, and they both, you know, fund joint together. One of the, there's been time when all the joint was apportioned out to either water or power, and then we've reconstituted most of that. So the, we've been trying to gather people in organizations where we thought they were best able to be managed and had, had similarity, and so that we had a strong joint function, although joint is anything but one piece. It's, it's, it's many, many pieces together. But really try to focus on having water over the things that are pertaining to water, power, things pertaining to power. And then, of course, we've had, you know, some of the issues where certain things that look like joint services have really, really served, like Kathy Rubin in the Environmental Group, have really served regulatory compliance, you know, directly for the, for the systems. And so it's made, it's made sense. Things have been combined, uncombined different ways over the years, but always looking for the perfect fit where there's the best, best amount of direct control, so that the, the people providing the service and the people needing the service have the best, closest tie without going through a kind of management arc to get things done. Some of it has to do with being able to be, have that really work relationship that needs to exist between organizations. Sometimes you need to have actually a little bit of split in the work relationship to make sure there's more of an autonomy. And so, so in, in, in moving, you know, organizations between, you know, between joint power and water, that's always been the goal, is to, is to get the best dynamic to where they can function well and, and do their role, both in support, but also, it's, there's a lot of interdependence here. And, and so, I don't know if there's any specifics you had a question about, or if you had to add to, because I know you've been working on the joint organization.
Yeah, I think what, what, what we are all looking at is the continuous improvement concept where efficiencies actually are realized by aligning the needs of the organization when it comes to delivering water and power. So all the frontline employees that are delivering water and power, and then from there on, everybody in the organization as a support function, whether it's the facilities, it's the fleet, it's the IT functions. So a lot of times, a large organization will have, have different cost centers that are trying to do the same things, and, and by just collaborating across the organization and, and solving each other's needs in, in a much more efficient way is always something that we're going to be looking for opportunities. Fleet is a good example, where John Smith, you know, we've, we've, we've done the study of underutilized equipment, which cost us O and M money, and start putting a integrated resource plan for fleet that actually has water and power as their goal, to serve them the most efficient way. And this is where the technology and efficiency in supplying them with equipment will, will be much better suited. Decentralized services, it's always, it's always a balance between centralizing some of those services for efficiency and decentralizing them for effectiveness and response level. So that's where the facilities is, Tom, Tom DeSmith is putting the long-term vision of, and with, you know, real estate, Adriana Rubicava and her staff, they're doing great collaborating with each other on figuring out the best way for us to resolve some of these issues for both water and power instead of separately. So the facilities that we're requiring are decentralized, are smaller than, than the traditional large yards. And we, we had a lot of real estate, those large yards made sense because you had centralized supply chain and fleet and repairs and everything in one place. With the city being so, so dense right now, moving from point, point A to point B of the, the city is, is taking us a long time to the, to respond. So we are changing the strategy on how we envision the headquarters of the future and making it more decentralized. These are all conversations that are not happening in vacuum. There's, there's a lot of collaboration between water and power and everybody else. And, and we're always going to look for the dollar that is not being used for serving the customer. That dollar is wasted dollar. So when it comes to administrative functions, and I've mentioned this before, we have, we have a lot of pockets of the organization that do administrative functions that are unified. Let's say hiring, for example, should be unified, you know, organizational, you know, communications, training, timekeeping, the essential functions of the organizations are all centralized training that we could do. And we're working with our local 18 and our JLM process to make sure those, those training levels, standards are high, so we can be much more efficient on those. So administratively, those are also O and M costs that we are. So there's always this balancing act that, that, that we, we need to adjust and tweak and, and get better at, but it's a never-ending pursuit of making sure every dollar is spent for serving the customer when it comes to delivering water and power. That's the bottom line.
And just because this is my first budget cycle, is it, is it usually a volume that's this big that we're moving functionally between systems? It seems like a lot to me.
I think.
You're talking dollar amount?
In, in terms of headcount.
Oh, headcount.
Yeah, this is unusual. This, I think, was an exceptional year with the level of functional transfers going between the systems. So we've had some in the, I think, several years ago, but I think this was an exceptional year with this many.
Okay. And did the OPAs office have any opinion on how that looked?
Yeah, we asked for the net dollar impacts, and because of the rather laborious budget system, it could be many, many months before you could actually know what the net dollars are that go with these people changes. One of the things our report does for you is track the appropriations in a manner that is consistent from year to year without the structural changes. So if power pays water a dollar and water pays power a dollar and that nets to zero, it's kind of a wash trade.
True.
Right? So when we look at appropriations over the long term, what we can see is a lot of the structural change gets filtered out, because by the second year after the budget year, the number is final and never changes again. And so you can see with the trend lines that we've provided, that in two years, you'll get to know exactly what the net dollars were that went that away, because a position that goes to joint might or might not have costs that get shared between the divisions. And so the netting right now, there's no clarity about it. You kind of look in the rearview mirror two years back and say, like, is the car still in the middle of the road? It's a pretty kind of... It's a pretty kind of loose steering mechanism that you have.
Yeah, so a best, best educated guess, and then we'll keep our eyes on it.
Yeah, a good example is the fleet functions. This was all in the power. And power is not in the business of serving the entire department. So that, to me, it's, these are conversations that we could have and from, based on experience and what we know it's effective, a fleet service is always in the background, serving the entire department, not just one or the other. So that way we can balance the resources and the service levels.
Okay.
So that alignment looks as if like power is going down and joint is going up, but those are all conversations we can have of why those are necessary.
And in reality, it's, it's the same number of people doing the same work. And when they were in power, all the water charges would be charged to water or whoever else. So-
Yep.
So the money should wash in a case like that. It's a matter of reporting and, you know, where, what, what that structure is there, you know, describe how it best serves everybody.
And safety is in the-
That's one of the reasons why we track it the way we do for you is I was first here at 13, and the procurement had been going from centralized to decentralized. And I was out at the, the LA reservoir, and, and the guy who couldn't get a microscope to save his life was saying, you know, every time there's a blue moon, the department seems to switch from one to the other, and it's chaos while we transition from central to decentral our back. And I thought, you know, we, we invented these things called computers, and you can have both at the same time, centralized and decentralized. But the department's IT modernization is so lagging the industry that its ability to get that balance between central and decentralized tends to careen back and forth over control issues instead of being a shared control through modern IT. And so it's a pretty long journey to get to the endpoint we're all trying to get.
One, one other function, just bringing these examples just to show, again, these are all open for conversation. So the safety, for example, was decentralized.
Yeah.
And as we move forward on, on making sure our safety is supported, trained, procedures are in place, a central located corporate safety function is much more effective from all the case studies and everything that, that we've seen that would be much more effective, much more visibility to making sure every pocket of the organization is maintained.
Standards.
So those are all conversations we could have, and we could, we could adjust and move forward. But those are all the logic behind why something makes more sense in joint or it makes more sense in, in the systems.
My only recommendation was going to be that in the future, when we do the preliminary budget passage, you know, at the last meeting or the meeting before-
Yeah.
-to include these functional changes in that presentation package so that we can understand how many heads are moving from which system and what the justification for each of those transfers is so that we're not playing catch-up on the backend when we get the board letter. I think that'd be really helpful. And that way we'll have two to four weeks of intervening time where we can have some private conversations with the division heads about what that really means, what sort of safety and efficiency and flexibility concerns are involved. And obviously, it's not our job to tell you how to run the business, well, it is, but not in that way. But I, I do think there is a, there is a little bit of, of time that we need to do that oversight well. And so building that in a little early into the process would be super helpful.
Yep.
We can do that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for, thank you for your time.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it.
Good job, Marian.
Marian? I hope you have a vacation booked.
Yeah. We just did it last night, so. Thank you.
First sleep, then vacation.
Yeah.
Okay. Where are we?
Number two, this, we presentation.
Yeah, what have we got in number two, Marty?
So we have a presentation by our, it's the annual report by our Society of Women Engineers chapter, and I see them here, sell them here earlier, walk in, so. An identifiable color.
Okay.
Turn it over to you and your-
We're going to start with a, we're still in the morning, so good morning. All right. Good morning, commissioners and executive managers. My name is Elise Pruitt, and I am the Managing Water Utility Engineer for Water Operations Division, Aqueduct Section, starting Monday. And also the President of LADWP, Society of Women Engineers Professional Chapter. And presenting with me today are Vice President of Water, Anna Avalar, and Vice President of Water, Megan Hahn. It is with great pleasure that we present to you our fourth annual report for fiscal year 2324. All right. In our presentation today, we will provide an overview of some important topics such as our beginnings and our mission, introduction of our board members who are here today, our objectives, event highlights, our mentorship program, an update on the SUI National Conference that was held in Los Angeles this past year, female engineering hiring data, and of course, the future plans and goals. We were established on March of 2018. Our biggest gratitude goes to the five founding members who I believe will go down in LADWP history, including our own Executive Manager, Evelyn Cortez-Davis. In just six years, we are now 263 members strong, and we are still accepting applications for anyone who would like to join our organization. I'd like to first thank our fearless executive advisors, Heidi Heraoka, who is still here? All right. She is the Chief of Staff of the Water System, and Nermina Rusik-O'Neil, who unfortunately couldn't be here today. She's the Manager of Resource Planning and System Resiliency. They have been with us, my gosh, with, with us every step of the way, giving us just as many lunches and as much of their free time as they could afford to guide us, advise us, and direct us in the most supportive way. We are so grateful for your continued dedication and commitment to our mission and our objective. We are so grateful and thank you. All right. Next, I'd like to take a moment to introduce our board and some of our active members who are here today. If you're here, please stand to be recognized. It has been, oh, come on. It has been an absolute pleasure and a privilege to work with such dedicated, passionate, and committed group of female leaders who have been dedicated, who have dedicated many hours of personal time and so many lunches to help support, deliver, and achieve the goals that we've set for ourselves and for our members. Some of these women have demanding jobs here, not just here, but also at home, raising their children, taking care of their families, yet they made time to be part of this organization and make a difference for their community. I'm grateful for all that you did, you do, and that you will do, not just for SUI, but LADWP as well. Thank you all. All right. Our mission is very simple. It is to stimulate employees to achieve full potential in their careers by providing supportive networking opportunities, mentoring, and fostering a culture that recognizes and respects the contributions of all. Again, our members are 263, and our membership consists, if you were interested, 73% female, 26% male, thank you, and we have 17% non-STEM employees.
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners and Members of Management. My name is Anna Avalar. I'm a Civil Engineering Associate in the Project Management Office in the Water Engineering and Technical Services Division. Our objectives here at SUI are very simple. They are to transform, recruit, and support. We aim to transform the next generation of students by piquing their interest in STEM early on. We have partnered up with GALLA, the Girls Academic Leadership Academy, the first all-public, all-girls public STEM school in the Los Angeles Unified School District. Try saying that three times. This past year, we continued our hosting our field trips and outreach events for the students with the help of our many grateful, great volunteers. Our partnership with HR also continues strong. We help provide volunteers for recruitment in national and regional conferences and at local universities. And perhaps the last and most important objective is to support our members. We aim to provide professional development opportunities, mentoring, and support for those seeking to advance their career here within the department.
Hello, Board of Commissioners and Executive Management. My name is Megan Hahn, and I am a Civil Engineering Associate at the Utilities Scoring Nucleus Group in the Power System Planning Division. So throughout this year, we had the opportunity to host and organize a number of successful events related to education, social and networking, professional, and recruitment and outreach. For one of our educational events, we hosted one of our most popular events that we do every year, which is the Core for Personalities Test, where we have members grow in their communication skills and their relationships in the workplace. Another educational event was the 3W23 conference presentations, where we were able to stream the direct broadcast of the presentations and speaker events for the members that were unable to attend the conference this year. For some of our social and networking events, we hosted our Members Appreciation Lunch earlier this year nearby at Kendall's, and we were able to recap some of SUI's major events, listen to our keynote speakers, and of course sincerely thank our members and our management for their support. We also had the Conrad's Happy Hour Event, where managers and associates had the opportunity to network with one another. For some of our professional development events, we had our 2023 National SUI Conference right here in Los Angeles this past October, and Anna will go more into detail in the next few slides. And for recruitment and outreach, we had a couple of field trips where we took some of the GALLA students to one of our power plants, as well as the LA Aqueduct Filtration Plant, to showcase some of the department's facilities. So earlier this February, we had launched our mentoring program for the 2024 calendar year. And this objective, the objective of this program is to facilitate professional and personal development, provide a supportive network of mentors, provide career and work-life balance guidance, and leverage relationships for mentees to really, to reach their full potential. Throughout the year, the program will offer one-on-one mentoring relationship agreements through monthly scheduled engagements to talk about anything that may contribute to their professional development. This program will also host sessions such as interview prep and resume critiquing.
The SUI Conference is an annual event that draws anywhere from 18,000 to 20,000 attendees for one of the nation's largest engineering conferences to date. This past year, the conference was held here at the LA Convention Center. We set out with the goal to go big and be known as the employee of, employer of choice, and we delivered. In terms of recruitment, we had a larger booth at the Career Fair, which allowed us to target more of that foot traffic that tends to center around the front. In total, we had more than 200 booth visitors, 92 applicants, 58 interviews, and three job offers were accepted. In the evening, we also had a hospitality suite, which allowed us to network with prospective candidates in a more relaxed environment. We submitted applications and were selected to be the hosts of two tours. The technical tour showcased our Tahunga groundwater remediation facility and our remediation program as a whole, along with the green metals facility. The non-technical tour was a hike through Griffith Park, which showcased our city's natural beauty and our recycled water infrastructure. To attend these tours, conference attendees had to pay a fee, and I'm happy to report that both of them were sold out. We also encourage department employees to submit sessions to be, to have their abstracts be considered to be speakers at the conference. This is an opportunity for growth and for development for the individuals to speak on a public stage at the national level. The topics can be technical and non-technical-like, non-technical alike, from work-life balance to how to advance your career. It depends on the speaker themselves. On average, SUI receives more than 1,000, SUI National receives more than 1,000 abstracts for consideration. Our employees submitted 18, and five were accepted, the ones you see on the screen there. In terms of brand recognition, we set out to be known as the employer of choice. This past year, we became a corporate sponsor. This allowed us to place our logo on the water bottle that was given to every single one of the 18,000 attendees to get our name out there. We also sponsored the closing keynote speech where Commissioner McLean Hill was able to say a few remarks prior to a short video playing, which highlighted LADWP's talented employees and innovative projects. And in terms of employee attendance, with the help of DEI, Local 18, and all the department managers, we were able to sponsor attendance for more than 100 department employees. In addition to, we also sponsored the attendance for GALLA students at the Saturday event called Invented Build It, where we also staffed with volunteers. This event aims to build pre-college students' confidence and interest in STEM by combining creativity and hands-on activities and by learning from engineers already in the field.
So the next SUI National Conference will be held in Chicago, Illinois, from October 24th to October 26th, and the theme is Together We Rise. LADWP will participate and recruit at this year's conference to promote LADWP as an employer of choice, a company that has great benefits, work-life balance, and innovative projects that bring clean energy and sustainable water to the city of Los Angeles. Some of our members have submitted abstracts and are awaiting acceptance to lead some of the speaker sessions and panel discussions. After the department's successful presence at last year's conference, we want to maintain and focus on brand recognition to continue attracting the new generation of engineers.
All right. I'd like to talk about some data, share some data with you on engineering demographics for LADWP. I thought this might be interesting. From the recruitment trends data on this chart, of all the engineers hired between 2020 and 2023, female engineers hired were at 21%, 29%, 12%, and 22%, somewhat, somewhat consistent with each year. Looking at the table in blue, in 2020, of the 1,361 engineers, 19.5%, roughly 20%, were female, and 80% were male. Compared to the table in green on the right, that's for 2024, that shows a slight improvement. Of the 1,617 engineers, 20.2% were female and 79.8, 79.8 were male, so about 280. I'd like to actually commend the department. I, I didn't know this, but once I was putting these numbers together, I recognized and noticed that on the data with the orange table, those data points show for, again, this is just for two classifications of the MOEs, or the managing water utility engineers and the PEMs, power engineering managers, classifications. Women represent 31% for water side, for the water side, and 19% on the power side, which is consistent and on the water side above the engineering demographic percentage. So I thought that was very interesting. So moving forward for SUI, I'm thinking of, we're all thinking about putting a, an emphasis on how we can do a little bit more outreach at the universities, and also how we can help with girls in middle school and high school to want to pursue degrees in engineering and STEM. We believe that that can make an impact on the availability of female candidates for hire.
So for the future, we plan on hosting and partaking in new and exciting events, and we want to focus on supporting our women engineers, transform and develop personal growth and professional relationships, and recruit for the, recruitment for the department. Similar to previous years, we want to emphasize networking, expand our membership, and establish our relationships to support DIY girls.
So, on behalf of the LADWP SUI Board and its members, we'd like to thank the Honorable Board for their full support, DDP Executive Management, DI Office, and the support of all DDP Division leaders for seeing us, joining us, and supporting us and their employees as we create opportunities for individual and professional development of our members and all other LADWP employees. So we have a brief video to show highlighting, I have a title. Let's take a look at this video. It's LADWP female engineers.
In a world of limitless possibilities, meet the remarkable women of LADWP who make great achievements in STEM while living their best lives, both at work and at home.
I am the first and so far the only person in my family to have received a master's degree or higher. degree or higher, and I'm very honored. And that was not possible without DWP's tuition reimbursement program. While I was an undergrad at Cal State Northridge, I was a part-time student engineer here for two years, so I was able to gain work experience while still working on my bachelor's degree. I went to the University of Southern California, or USC, for a master's degree in electrical engineering with a focus in power systems. I had a lot of support from my management and my supervisors. They encouraged me to enroll in the tuition reimbursement program, and they allowed for work-life balance if I needed to take paid time off in order to study more for an exam or work on a group project. They definitely approved it.
I raised two children. They're off to college now, a boy and a girl. And the great thing about LADWP is that it's very flexible. I was able to take time off to take care of my children, able to enroll them, you know, in local preschools nearby. LADWP really is my second family. You know, my coworkers, my bosses, they've all supported me throughout my years. There's flexibility, not only financially, but also in giving me advice on my promotions up to this point.
Working at LADWP and the great benefit that we have, starting from the salary to the paid time off and the medical and the dental plan, really helps to focus on the family. One of the things that I love about LADWP is the stable work environment, the retirement plan and the future, and just knowing that that part is taken care of, and not only for myself, but also for my children. And that helps me focus on my day-to-day work.
And so being a woman in STEM in college and then once I left college, being a millennial, I was really in social media from day one, MySpace, Facebook, then Instagram. So I really enjoyed consuming content on those platforms. But a lot of the creators on those platforms were just doing full-time content creation. They weren't really working full-time jobs. And I kind of started wondering where our representation was on these kind of platforms as millennials. So that was my first little itch to start a page that was dedicated towards being a woman in engineering and what that looks like. I also was really involved from early on in K-12 outreach. So when I was doing that, I realized I could only reach students one class at a time, whereas the younger generation now is all on social media. So if I could reach a larger number of young women and men that want to be into engineering, it would make a larger impact in a quicker way.
My passion outside of LADWP is photography. I love seeing things through my eyes, through the lens, and just finding that focal point that I can love and appreciate. Working here at LADWP has allowed me to do that. I've been able to travel the world, travel to parts of the United States that I find dear to me. I took a six-week backpacking trip. I went to Armenia last year to visit my home country and allow my children to experience what it is.
At LADWP, women are math mavens, data divas, physics phenoms, and overall whizzes, but they also get to be queen moms, pursue higher learning, and travel the world. LADWP, empowering women to thrive in STEM careers while living fulfilling lives outside of work.
I'm excited to film with you, Chicago.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Ashley, don't worry.
Thank you.
Good thing.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. That was really such a fantastic presentation. And I just want to say on a personal note, having participated in a number of events, speaking to the girls at the GALLA School, and loved connecting with you all at the Women's Nature Walk. So thank you for being there and doing that outreach. I've just really seen firsthand, especially with our youth, what a difference it makes to have role models. For the GALLA Career Event, I spoke on a panel with SUI member Helen Oliveras, and just seeing the questions that were coming from these girls and seeing their faces light up when they really saw the potential of their own careers is just really inspiring. And I just really appreciate everything that you do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's do filed items. Do we have any filed items?
That's awesome.
We have two.
Right. So we can answer any questions if there are any of those. If not, they can just be approved and accepted.
Everybody got any questions?
How much? It's the Elysian Reservoir Enhancement Fund. So how much is the fund? Am I not seeing something?
The Elysian Reservoir Fund?
The materials are in Prime Gov. I can pull it up.
Yes. Jonathan, is there anybody?
Yeah, I'm going to invite Evelyn Cortez-Davis, Director of Water Engineering Technical Services, in the videos you just saw, come in, explain a little bit about our MOU. Thank you.
Was there a question about the remaining fund of the Elysian?
What, yeah, what is the remaining?
So the remaining fund looks like it is $5,337,889.44.
And this was the money set aside when we covered Elysian Reservoir?
Yes.
So for the area, for park improvements, since it didn't take place right out the reservoir, but ones that the community and vacant parks could select in there.
The black balls, right?
Okay.
No, we actually, we had the black balls on there, then replaced with the permanent floating cover. Yes.
I remember.
Exactly. You recall. Yes.
I do remember. All right. Any other questions?
Well, it would be nice at some point, but I guess I could do it before the next meeting. Just want to, I'd like to see what was done.
Okay. An update on the projects, Commissioner Lare?
Yeah.
We can provide that for you.
Okay.
Yes, we'll contact the Commission Office and provide that.
Okay, sounds good.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the two items? Okay. Without objection, we'll move right along. Motion on the minutes. We'll have a motion in a second from board members should be determined, but any objection to all members here being recorded? Eye votes on the minutes?
No objection.
Thank you. Moving right along. Introduction of motions for future consideration. Anything? No. Okay. Question with Neighborhood Council reps?
No community impact statements or formal positions were filed on any of the items on today's agenda.
All right. Thank you. A couple of announcements before we continue down the list here. Denise was unanimously approved by the L.A. City Council and is in the process of being sworn in or sworn at at this point.
That's next.
No, it goes both ways. No, no. So that is done. And
Good.
Now that transition will start. And also on Thursday at 10:00 a.m., she's going to be addressing an all-hands staff meeting from the cafeteria. 10:00 a.m. It'll go out over all of our internal systems. So be aware of that. I think I'm catching up on my notes here, but everyone's, yeah. Okay. Items for approval.
Done.
We've already done all those, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Sure I'm not missing anything.
Were there minutes? I think we
We just did that.
Oh, okay.
Here.
Then I think that's it.
Julie, any reason for us to spend time with you in the back room?
There is an item that we would ask the Board's approval on. So if I can do the magic words for closed session?
Thank you.
The Board shall recess into closed session for a conference with legal counsel regarding the items listed under Section M of the agenda. The Board shall publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention of every member present thereon in accordance with Section 54957.1 of the California Government Code.
And I take it this is not a long session or?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Right behind.
To the back cave?
Julie, do you want in there? Are you in there?